Welcome to the July 19th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Kurt Wade has our prayer, and then we have Houston Sproles with Troop 398 from St. Mark's who's working on his Eagle Scout designation is going to do our pledge today. Kurt?
Let's pray. Oh, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for what you're doing in our city. Lord, we ask you to bless the leadership of our city to make the right decisions in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Houston, if you'll come to the podium.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to, thank you, Mr. Sproles. Do want to publicly say, I was not here for the last meeting, but y'all may have mentioned this last Thursday, but Councilman Wade's father passed away a couple of weeks ago, so we want to let you know that you've been in our thoughts and our prayers, and your family will continue to be in our prayers.
Thank you.
All right, we have Greg Tucker, who is our county historian, is here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My topic this month is suggested by Councilman Kurt Wade. We're going to talk about Bradley Academy and Bradley School. Bradley Academy has a confused history involving five sites and five distinct institutions all using the academy name. Thanks, however, to documentation recently identified, we can now fairly well sort out this confusion. The history begins with an 1805 congressional offer of land grants to support in part the establishment of a public school in each Tennessee county. To take advantage of this federal offer, the Tennessee State Legislature in 1806 appointed five trustees to establish academies in each of the Tennessee counties. Five trustees were selected from landowners in the town of Jefferson area and were appointed to develop an academy in Rutherford County. The 1806 Act, interestingly enough, specified, this is three years before the academy came into existence, specified that it would be called Bradley Academy. No explanation as to why or who or what in the legislative history. We know that it was a common practice in the early 1800s to name places, institutions, entities to honor revolutionary veterans. And research shows that there is a John Bradley, a revolutionary minor officer in the revolutionary military, who had a land grant in Rutherford County, but he had absolutely nothing to do with the founding of the school. He had nothing to do with the location of the property or such, so we can only speculate that it might have been this John Bradley that they were trying to honor. Newspaper ads from the period 1809 established that the academy did open on property made available by Thomas Rucker. It was a few miles east of Jefferson Town. Samuel Black from Kentucky was named the headmaster, and the school was supported by three sources of funds. The land grant and the income generated from the land grant, by funds from a state lottery, that sounds familiar, and by student tuitions of $15 a year, quite a bit of money back in But in 1813, as we've talked about before, interest up in this part of the county succeeded in getting the county seat moved from Jefferson to what became Murfreesboro and took control of the county government. They also went to the legislature and essentially wanting the spoils of their political success, had the trustees of Bradley Academy dismissed and five new trustees appointed. The new trustees, not surprisingly, were landowners in the Murfreesboro area. First thing they did was announce that the school was going to be moved. Bradley Academy was literally picked up and moved into Murfreesboro, and Matthias Murphy, son of Colonel Hardy Murphy, made property available at the northeast corner of what became East Main and, in recognition of the school location, North Academy. That's where the Episcopal Church now stands. So that was the second location of the school, but, well, interesting. Probably the best period of the school was 1813, 14, 15, and during that time, a number of my fellow historians have indicated that James K. Polk, future president, was a student there. The problem is that that's speculation based on some correspondence indicating that he was educated in Murfreesboro. If you'll look up the official biography of James K. Polk in the State Blue Book, they make clear that he attended Murfreesboro College. That was a private school from which the College Street got its name that existed contemporary with the 1810 period, to the extent you can trust the Blue Book that's orange. We at least, we at least can confirm that he went to school somewhere in Murfreesboro, but it may well not have been Bradley Academy. In 1818, headmaster Samuel Black quit. He was having trouble getting along with the trustees, and he went back to Jefferson and started another private school there. Couple of years later, his assistant, a fellow named Henderson, who had been a school teacher in the area and was a minister, he was a minister of the Presbyterian Church, he quit and went to an area north of Murfreesboro and started his private school. This left Bradley Academy with no faculty and the school shut down. Now it begins to get interesting. In 1826, a fellow named Barlow opened a school south of Murfreesboro and called it Bradley Academy. We refer to that as the bootleg Bradley Academy because he had no authority and no state backing on that. In 1834, the state legislature tried again and again issued a charter and appointed a local board of trustees to establish a, how would you say, publicly funded school in Rutherford County, and they decided to call it Bradley Academy. So here we have three Bradley Academies. The first one, the bootleg, and a second independently chartered Bradley Academy. They were given property and purchased property in part from the Murphy heirs. The site is, well, it turns out coincidentally, on South Academy Street, a street already named Academy. The new school, however, had no land grant support, and it just happened that in the 1830s, the state legislature outlawed state lotteries. So the only source of income for the school was tuition from students, and suffice it to say, by 1841, this school had gone under for problems with financing. The property was taken over by Union University, and in 1848, the building and all assets of the defunct academy were transferred to Union University. After the war, somebody may know, Union University, which was actually a Baptist institution, was taken out of Murfreesboro and moved to Jackson, Tennessee. So as a legal matter, the legacy, the intangible assets of Bradley Academy went to Jackson, Tennessee in the 1840s. The building that had been used by the academy after the Civil War was taken over by the city and used for a common school for several years. In 1884, the common school was converted to a free public school exclusively for black children. This was among the first free school for the children of the former slaves, established in Tennessee, very likely one of the very first in the entire southeast. Although officially identified as the, quote, "colored school," it came to be known as Bradley School, probably because the building was known to have been the last home of Bradley Academy. The term "academy" was not used in reference to this free school, probably because that term was historically used to identify a school requiring a tuition payment. Bradley School used the old structure for 34 years, meeting and exceeding its educational objectives. In 1918, this original structure was replaced by a building that still stands today. The cornerstone on the building identifies the structure, and I went and checked this afternoon, identifies the structure as the, quote, "colored school" building, no reference to Bradley or the Bradley name. But the school name Bradley School endured. Now, when the 1918 building was vacated in 1955, the new elementary school now on Mercury Boulevard was opened as Bradley Elementary School. The name has been recently changed to Bradley Academy, and I went and asked the principal a couple of years ago, what was the point of changing the name, and he suggested that, well, maybe, quote, "it'll help to establish a useful link with the past," but the unique Bradley School name has disappeared. My concern, in 1884, shortly after the end of Reconstruction, and while Jim Crow attitudes were just beginning to emerge, this community established one of the very first free publicly funded schools for black children. That's history I think we can be proud of. In 1918, while the 20th century clan was gaining political influence across the South, this community, our community, built a state-of-the-art school facility for our black children. That's history we should be proud of. In my opinion, linking and obscuring this proud history by confusing it with a rich white boys' academy that was politically abused, failed twice, was bootlegged for a period, had a faculty that quit, and it was eventually merged and moved to West Tennessee, only confuses the real history that we should know because that's what makes us who we are. Bradley School is not Bradley Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right, you now have the consent agenda in front of you. Is there anything you see to take on or off the consent agenda?
There aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have the minutes of the July 12 special meeting and July 12 regular meeting.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have, we're moving to old business. Ordinance 180Z17, second reading, Twin Oak Drive, RS 6, simultaneous with annexation.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Ordinance 18040, second reading, amend chapter 29 subdivision maps and plats.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Wright. Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Ordinance 18042, second reading, amend chapter four alcoholic beverages.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Ordinance 18042, second reading, amend chapter four alcoholic beverages.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Move to new business. Amend 19.6 acres in West Lawn PUD along Veterans Parkway, 2018-414.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider a request to amend an existing West Lawn PUD. The property itself is about 207 acres in total. The request is to amend a 19.6 acre portion of that 207 acre property. I've provided a map to you that shows the location of the property. You can see it's located along north of Shores Road. It's also located west of Veterans Parkway and south of I-840 or State Route 840. West Lawn Boulevard goes right through the middle of this property. The subject area for which they're requesting an amendment is identified in the hatch pattern on the map before you, so it too is orange, but there's also a hatch pattern on it and an arrow showing area. This area is currently zoned PUD and allows the development of townhome style multifamily or residence. The property has remained undeveloped largely for, since the zoning came to effect in 2007. The applicants are requesting for you to change the zone to allow this area to be divided into two subareas, which they've identified as C4 and C5. Pages 40 through 43 of your program book give you the specifics of the subarea C4 and C5. They've listed the uses proposed to be permitted in each area. Subarea C4 is located closest to Veterans Parkway, adjacent to the future commercial portion of the West Lawn Development, and has a larger list of commercial uses to be permitted there. The area identified as C5 is located closer to Shores Road and the existing and developing single-family portion of West Lawn Development and the unincorporated portion of Rutherford County along the south side of Shores Road. During the public hearing, Planning Commission discussed the proposed uses, and they were uncomfortable with the use of a hotel being located in that subarea C5, the one closest to the residential area, and have asked the applicants to remove that from the program book that you have before you remove hotel as a use proposed to be permitted in C5. Future land use map recommends this area develop as multifamily residential district, largely taking into consideration the fact that the current zoning allows apartments. We do expect any development of this property to meet our gateway design overlay district standards, so they've committed to meeting all those design criteria in the gateway. Also, there is a relocation of Shores Road, which would be a three-lane commercial street, and whoever developed this property will be responsible for constructing a portion of that road that would be a part on their side of the property. We do anticipate the possibility of having two signalized intersections in this area, one at West Lawn Boulevard and the other at Blackman Road and Shores Road where they will connect. The Planning Commission had six members present the evening of the public hearing. Mrs. Jones abstained from voting, and five members voted to approve this request with the contingency a hotel be removed from subarea C5. Mr. Randy Caldwell's here, and he'd like to present to you additional details regarding the PUD. If you have questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Caldwell to the lectern.
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor, Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I also have Mr. John Harney with Parks Harney Investments, who is also the applicant on this project and has control of it right now. As Margaret Ann said, you know, again, just, I've got a quick PowerPoint here. I'd like to go over a little bit more detail and cover some of the bases that she did. Again, this is an image that shows the original area of the PUD, which, as Margaret Ann said, was about 207 acres. This was approved back in 2007, and some things have definitely changed since that occurred. Actually, Veterans Parkway was under construction at the time of the approval, so that was not in place at the time that was approved. And also, you all know about, obviously, about the new park on the northeast quadrant of this interchange. So two things that have changed pretty dynamically since then that, you know, is identifying this interchange as a destination area for Murfreesboro and, quite honestly, as a gateway into the area. Again, this shows the original PUD that was approved, and as Margaret Ann said, the R2 area that you see down the lower right-hand corner is the area that we are requesting the amendment to the PUD. Again, it's 19 acres, as she said, but about, it's really seven, that acreage actually includes the Shores Drive realignment, so the area that basically will be developed after that point is approximately 17 acres that we're seeking the new use on there. Again, as part of that, as Margaret Ann said, you can see the realignment of Shores Road there, and as this property has sold since then, basically, this area contains that right away and controls, you know, the dedication of that as part of this. You see a number of access points that were identified that we worked pretty hard with the staff on as far as how access would be gained into the development, and we're honoring those as we look at this amendment request. This shows you, I guess, a further version of the 98 townhomes that was, actually, we did go through final plans, but they have seen that this is not a feasible development, I think particularly with the cost of the, basically with the cost of the realignment of Shores Road. As Margaret Ann said, the first one that comes to the table is responsible for building a major portion of that. Do want to point out, because I know there's some history associated with, there was some concern about the old Shores Road maybe being cul-de-sac there. There were some concerns from neighbors, and that is not part of this. This is still planned to go, you know, stay in place as is, so that is not part of anything that we're requesting, and you can see where that cul-de-sac was at the end with that original submittal. So again, I think we're staying with the original plan of keeping that open. Just looking at this, how it relates to the surrounding existing PUD, because as you can see, the C4 area, you see the commercial areas that were zoned as part of that, the C1, the C2, and the C3 area, so we already do have commercial areas on three sides of what, you know, what this leftover triangle is. And we did consciously look at the intensity of the commercial development. We looked at the land uses because we did intentionally do the two districts, basically to lessen the intensity of the commercial development as it progressed back towards the neighborhood. So that was purposefully done to be sensitive to the neighbors, but essentially, basically to the South, and also the ones that have already bought homes in the West Lawn Development there. Again, the C4 area, which is the front portion, is roughly 10.6 acres in that area. The land uses that we had basically identified this were very consistent with what were identified within the original PUD on there. Actually, we took a lot of uses, also other uses out of that that were maybe seen not quite as favorably, you know, within the original PUD, so we did that purpose. We worked with staff on the allowed land uses on there. The bulk regulations are still the same. We have a little bit greater height along that edge in response to being actually, you know, with the Veterans Parkway access that we have and we think is pertinent with the character of that roadway along there. Again, as Margaret Ann said, we are committed to both the GDO requirements, and actually, since this was passed, obviously, the design guidelines have been passed, so adding further restrictions relative to the quality of development that needs to take place. And again, these are just some images of, you know, the land uses that are proposed and what the quality of architecture that would be committed to as part of that. Again, the C5 area to the rear, again, we lessened the intensity on there and really restricted the use to assisted living, age-restricted homes. We also had, I believe, townhomes in there and some other residentially oriented uses. As part of that, with the residential uses, we restricted the heights. We worked with the staff on restricting the height to that to three stories. We did have office and medical office still allowed as a use, and we actually stepped down the maximum height on that, too, as we transitioned to the neighborhood. So again, trying to be sensitive to the less intensive uses and building mass that would be on that back edge of the property. And again, these are, again, images just kind of reflecting what would be, we would basically have to adhere to from an architectural standard that's truly representative of the design guidelines and both the gateway design overlay criteria. One of the other elements that was part of the original PUD submittal was a buffer strip that needed to be implemented in order to screen the uses from the residential's to the south and east, and we're still committed to that. That is a 40-foot wide buffer with berm planting, with plantings on top of that as well, so that's been basically moved to the edge of the property to create a more effective buffer that allows the development to occur more internal to the property. So that is our request. We hope that, again, is in response to, I think, the changing dynamics with Veterans Parkway actually being built and understanding that a little bit better. We hope that you feel that we're kind of consistent with the commercial nature of the corridor that is envisioned for that and the uses that would be anticipated with the new park out there. We are here to answer any questions after the public hearing is held.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? When you do come to the podium, have a few rules for our public hearings. If you come to the podium, if you'll make sure and state your name and your address. If you're representing yourself as an individual, you'll have three minutes. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. Any questions, if you'll please direct those to the city council. I'll make a copy of all the questions, and we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and city council members, my name's Larry Tippman. I live at 3371 Shores Road, directly across from the R5 area that they're wanting to change. Previously stated my objection to having this changed to commercial property. They've shown, it's a real nice feeling, and I appreciate the fact that anything that will be built there will meet gateway standards and that a berm will be built there that will knock off some of the view from our residences. However, all these pictures that you see show pictures of possible buildings that could possibly be built there from the front view. And if retail property is allowed to be built there, there's all kinds of goings-on at the back of the property, and no design has been shown to us as to what a building structure might look like that meets gateway standards from the rear view, which will be, if I am in my front yard or at my house, I will be facing that property directly, and all the goings-on behind a retail property will be very life-changing to me and my family that we've lived there since July 1985. Raised a family and grandkids, and we enjoy our property and our life on our land there and the country settings. So still, there's nothing nailed down saying what is going to be built there. It's just wanting to be changed to commercial property. Commercial, and it's also stated, there's a lot of other land there that's already been slated as commercial property. So why do we need to change this from what was originally proposed as residential and slotted for townhomes? Why does it need to be changed to commercial? And if you do pass this and approve it to be changed to commercial property, I would like that you would consider the fact that there would be nothing retail there, that it might be just the medical assisted living or some type of physician's facility, where there's less activity that goes on in the back of it, and understand that, you know, a berm is only so tall, landscaping is so tall, we have two-story homes that we will be able to see across above a berm that's existing directly across the street from us, so therefore... it might be just the medical assisted living or some type of physician's facility, whether there's less activity that goes on in the back of it. And understand that, you know, a berm is only so tall, landscaping is so tall, we have two-story homes, that we will be able to see across above a berm that's existing directly across the street from us. So therefore, I would like to object to this being changed to commercial property and let it maintain the townhome residential that was approved originally. And the fact that, if it is passed, I would like something done that the standard for the back of these buildings be aesthetically appealing to my home, to my family. And another thing that I really object to is-
Mr. Tipton, I'll give you about 15 more seconds.
One point. I've lived there for this length of time. My address has been Shores Road. I would like for that area there not to be changed, and my address would continue to stay Shores Road instead of changing the name to Birch Tree and diverting. You could, whatever you divert to that subdivision and realign to Blackman Road, that that street name be changed and the area in front of my house remain Shores Road.
Thank you, Ms. Tipton.
My name's Kenneth Hawkins. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife, Ashley Pope, who live at 3341 Shores Road. Every great injustice that we see at the root of it tends to be money, and that's what's at the root of this rezoning, money. So when we were here before, we were told that it was going to be a development of townhomes and that the developer had agreed to pay for the road, this and that and the third, and that seems to not be the case. So now this gentleman's come in with an opportunity to pay for the road. So it's all about the money. I get that. My property next to Mr. Tipton's property sits as one of the highest properties on that side of Shores Road. If this council is going to approve this plan, I would like for them to build in some sort of safety net that says the berm has to be X feet tall, the trees have to be X feet tall, the road at Shores Road will not, not likely not, be dead-ended, that all the things that are likely to happen are written into the plan that cannot be changed down the road. Also, I would ask that a list of the allowed properties or allowed buildings be submitted. Previously, you guys objected to the property along Veterans and I-840 having junk yards and all sorts of other commercial items there, and you made them provide a list of what was approved. So I'd like to see you guys provide a list of what can be approved there so that we're not left, as Larry said, to wonder what may go in there. We actually can understand that there's an approved list that's not everything from possibilities to maybes and what they are going to put in there, whether it be homes or whatnot. I think the biggest problem that I have with this overall is the process that has taken place. When we went before the planning committee or department or whatever they're called, we offered to sit down and have a conversation with them, to talk to them about the possibilities. Let's work together to see what we can do to help further development of Murfreesboro and to help provide us the security and sanctuary that we have in our neighborhood. They chose to not listen to us but to talk at us. We were told that the planning committee made plans 25 to 50 years out. Lo and behold, those plans can change in six months. We were told that Shores Road would never, at any point in time, ever have commercial down it, and literally laughed at us when we suggested it and said we didn't want our side of the property to not have commercial value down the road. So now, because someone's come in with money and prepared to build that road, they're okay with commercial. So do not like the way that the planning committee has approached this and how they have made us just swallow the pill. I know, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Wade, that you both are familiar with the Veterans and 96 area, only because I know you're doing work there. I know you live in that Blackman area. So I feel like what is happening here with this planning committee is that they are trying to work the homes on our side of Shores Road to end up like the man who lives on the corner of 96 and Veterans. That ultimately, we're going to be left with no choice, regardless of how long we've been there, regardless of what we've done there, regardless of our reason for not leaving or moving to this community, we are left with no choice but to either sell to Kroger or whoever and watch half of our home and property be taken away by road expansions and otherwise. I'm all for the development of Murfreesboro. I'm all for the growth of Murfreesboro. It helps my home values and my community. But what I would say to you is that I, my wife and I volunteered in this community 1,800 hours last year. She sits on the board of the Discovery Center. I sit on the board of several boards with the Boy Scouts of America. We all are doing the right thing in our community, and all we want is for the city of Murfreesboro to be active partners in that relationship and to not tell us what we have to do and to at least consider our wants and needs as they develop plans. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Mike Tanner. I live at 3431 Shores Road. First off, I would like to commend the city council and the staff for their handling of the budget process, postponing some projects, not raising city taxes, and adding one small fee. I'm asking for some of the same caliber of leadership regarding the plan before us tonight. This rezoning to a commercial plan is just plain wrong. The current planning process regarding the coexistence of the West Lawn subdivision and the Shores Road Veterans Parkway community is beyond flawed. It was established at the onset via community meetings with the original developer and the city that the area currently in question would be townhomes. Even the 2035 land use plan indicates townhomes. Why fund a study and not follow the recommendations, especially when there are scores of acres between this property and I-840 along Veterans Parkway already slated to be commercial? It is my understanding that the primary reason for this property being rezoned commercial is to generate enough revenue to build the access road. The residents of Shores Road and Veterans Parkway should not be the ones to suffer the collateral damage of a commercial development in an area that was termed at the onset to be a transitional area containing townhomes. At the public hearing before the planning commission, it was pointed out that, again, scores of acres along Veterans Parkway between Shores and I-840 already slated to be commercial, thus no reason to start commercial on this tract. One member of the planning commission went off on a tangent explaining the architecture would be the same as the gateway standards. Of course, yes, looking at the backside of a nice building is better, but again, another classic example of the serious disconnect between planning and reality. The nature of the business being conducted in front of one's home is the determining factor, not the architecture. As I mentioned earlier, I'm asking for the same caliber of leadership from this council and staff that has been previously demonstrated. Should the expense of the access road be amortized over more than just the 19 acres in question? I believe that there is a general consensus among the Shores Road and Veterans Parkway residents that any type of retail business on either tract is totally unacceptable. In summary, I would appreciate a response on the following three points. Asking for no retail business on either tract. Since this commercialization would affect the relative peace and tranquility of my neighborhood, I am questioning the funding method for the access road. And on another note, the rezoning signs were never posted on neither of these two tracks, not during the planning commission hearing nor now. One sign was posted a quarter mile away, just inside the West Lawn main entrance, in front of property owned by the other developer. Morally and legally, does this satisfy the proper notice requirements? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
My name's Travis Houseley, and I live at 3281 Shores Road. I'm not going to repeat anything these guys already said. I really don't want tractor-trailer traffic coming in for all these docks that are going to be hit. That's something nobody's touched on. I've got a family, two small girls, and there's already dump trucks that fly up and down the road all day. So, yeah, no commercial. Thank you.
Ray Mathis, 3521 Shores Road, representing myself. I'm here, I agree with my neighbors being against the rezoning of these tracks at the end of Shores Road. Forgive me, folks, I'm retired, and time doesn't mean to me what it used to mean to me, so if I get my dates wrong, forgive me. But 15 years ago, I went to a community meeting where this land was being sold, and the developer showed us the plan. They said this is a plan, and the plan is good. We took their word for it. And by the way, the plan included that PUD zoning at that area. 10 years ago, they started building, started constructing, and they constructed to the plan, and the plan was good. And had there not been the Great Recession, they probably would have completed it just to the plan. Unfortunately, the recession did happen. Maybe about a year ago, y'all, we came to a meeting with this council about blocking off the end of Shores Road, building a cul-de-sac, and rerouting to New Shores Road. And incidentally, in all of these plans, even dating back 15 years ago, the developer was responsible for building the New Shores Road. That's never changed until now. Now, all of a sudden, the developer can't afford to build New Shores Road, so he wants to redevelop it to make more money. So the plan is a plan until it ain't. I want you all to think back, if any of you were here 15 years ago, if this plan was good then, it should be good now. Again, I agree with my neighbors. We really don't want commercial property at the end of Shores Road. We thank you for pledging not to close Shores Road. We appreciate that, and I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's James Lovett. I live at 3683 Shores Road. I have lived at this residence since back in 86, and we bought there because it was in the country and everything else. Well, you've already taken the country away by putting all the houses across the road. Don't put a commercial thing, or put a miniature mall down on the same road and everything. It's ridiculous. We've got enough malls and everything else all around. I mean, I just think the whole idea is wrong all the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovett.
I'm Beth Spivey at 5083 Veterans Parkway. My husband, Russ, we're strongly opposed to the commercial going in there. We are on the south side of Veterans and Shores intersection, directly across from the land up for rezoning. And like my neighbors, my greatest concern is the loss of tranquility in our chosen and invested county setting. I would reiterate that it was proposed here originally with respect to our neighborhood that it be multifamily residential in the form of townhomes, which would actually invite a neighbor with at least the similarity of investment and continued betterment of our neighborhood. Obviously, there will always be issues inherent with a county-city line, but ramming commercial all the way up to a residential county line is not a good compromise. We do not desire or need commercial all the way up to our corner with all the land that is available down Veterans Parkway. We're not any different than any of you that sit on city council or planning. We understand progress is going to happen, the majority of which is good, but my guess is you want your home, your investment protected, just like we do. Commercial up to the corner would not only compromise our functional and aesthetic county neighborhood, but would also potentially affect our property values in a negative way. Please consider us with the same respect as you would in thinking of your own property and home as we request that you deny the rezoning for commercial.
Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, close the public hearing, and we'll consider ordinance 18OZ35 to amend the West Lawn PUD first reading 2018-414. Got a few notes that we had taken, probably Mr. Caldwell to ask a couple of questions.
Like, I can proactively address a few items if you'd like to, as part of that. Again, I heard a lot of concern about the service, you know, issues as far as the orientation of that. And I would say that, you know, since then, design guidelines also very specifically addressed that, of how those need to be treated and screened, particularly when they're in view of surrounding neighborhoods there. So I think there's a level of protection there as well, but I think also there's an additional level of protection with this being a PUD that gives the staff even a little bit more latitude as we come before you with any proposed new development that would be sensitive, maybe even above and beyond what the design guidelines say. So I think we can, you know, address that. As you look at the C4 property, too, maybe if they might be able to put the screen up there for me a little bit there, what I have on the screen on the PowerPoint, if that's possible. It may not be. But what is not shown on this plan as well is in that C4 block as it butts up to Shores Road there. That is the natural low point of the property, so that's going to be a fairly significant detention area there as well that's going to provide some physical, additional physical separation from any of the more intense C4 retail uses that are there. So we hope that that brings that along with the buffering. So that, basically, that lower right-hand corner is going to be more of a regional detention area that's going to give a little bit more physical separation, which always helps as well. The C5 area, the proposed uses in there with the medical office, office, assisted living, they typically don't have those long service areas proposed with them. They usually have small service areas, loading docks that could be a little bit easier screened as well. So kind of wanted to address that, that part of it. There was a question relative to specific uses. We do have very specific uses identified in here. And again, purposefully did that in the C5 area to provide less intense uses as they're in, again, lowered the height. Yes, sir. Yes.
Randy, while you're on that, the overview of C4, which is on page 40.
Yes, sir.
It has the permitted usage. What is SOAP?
Pardon me?
What is SOAP? S-O-A-P? It is listed-
That's a good, that's a good question. I honestly don't know. You know me, I don't know. I'm not going to say I know what it is. I believe we could probably take that off if there's a question relative to that, and so.
Okay, I'm going to mark that one off here. SOAP will not be permitted, okay?
And again, going back to the fact, we did work kind of with staff, has taken off some, even some of the more intense uses as we did that. So we are, you know, very specific in the uses there. It still does, though, contain retail components in there, because that's envisioned as a possible use on there. Relative to the berm in the back, we do have a width identified there. We don't have a plant height specified there, but we are, because of what we have identified as the birmingham design of that, we can achieve a six-foot berm as part of that. And talking to Mr. Harney, we would be committed to planting eight-to-12-foot trees-
Okay. We had a question, this would be for staff, about the naming of the road. And tell me if I'm wrong on this, but normally, we are not the initiation on changing a road. That's normally through emergency service on, when a road like that is, the names changed?
Mayor McFarland and council members, good evening. That is something that we would have to look at with the, the road realignment, when that occurs. This particular section of, of Shores Road, if Shores Road is realigned to go further north, would be, in essence, a separate road from the realigned Shores Road, and it would be our opinion that it would need a different, different street name. It makes sense, what we've talked about. It would intersect with where Birch Tree Drive is, which is within the West Lawn subdivision, so it would make sense to continue the Birch Tree Drive street name. Now, one thing that, that we would have to coordinate is with the county road board, because I believe that the portion of right-of-way that would be, that would have to be renamed is still within the county's jurisdiction. So, it would be, have to be a coordinated effort with the road project and with the county road board to review that street naming situation. But no, no decisions have been made with regards to that as of yet.
Mr. Blomley, if anything changes within a plan development, what's the process? So, if the applicant came back, what's the process if they wanted to change a use or something like that?
There are minimal changes that can be approved via a administrative process called a minor deviation, but the zoning ordinance is very specific in what can be approved. If staff has any doubt that, that the changes that are proposed go above and beyond the threshold established in the zoning ordinance, then we tell applicants, this requires an amendment to the plan development, which is, which essentially would kick the change into a rezoning process, just like what we're going through right now. And that would include any, any changes of use that are proposed, any changes of the standards. For example, if they wanted to eliminate the requirement that this be developed to the gateway design overlay district standards, that would require coming back before the planning commission and city council to amend the plan development. Likewise, if they sought to add additional uses, that would require coming back before the planning commission and city council, complete with, with a brand-new set of public hearings to amend the plan development.
Okay. I think the majority of the other comments just had to do with location of commercial for the residential.
I think one of the other things they asked, talked about the back of the properties for the buildings.
Back, back of the building.
I would, I would like for Ms. Green to come up and answer that, because that deals heavily in the design guidelines.
And the properties, as I mentioned before, and I think we've stated, are divided into two sections, C4 and C5. Some of the comments directly related to the back of retail-type uses, and C5 does not allow any type of retail uses. There is the forty-foot-wide buffer that's located adjacent to Shores Road, that is larger than any buffer we require anywhere in the city of Murfreesboro. Between a commercial and a residential use, normally we would require a fifteen-foot-wide landscape yard, but they're actually proposing a berm and provided a design for that berm. The slopes, and of course, our urban environmental department will look at the material to help screen that area. C4 has frontage and access to Veterans Parkway and the new road. It does not have any frontage or access to any of the existing single-family residential, and so they should not be seeing any of the back of what is at C4. C5 is most close to those properties, and just for clarity's sake, because I did hear some comments saying that uses, list of uses permitted should be provided, and they are, they have been provided in their books, but I'll go ahead and say, in this C5, and our cable department can pull up the map, that's on the lectern, if they're listening, there we go. And you can see the C4 and C5. And C5 is what's located most close to the people who spoke today, and the uses that they have proposed are age-restricted residential, assisted living, hospital, independent living, medical offices and offices, and those type uses don't typically have those loading docks and the large dumpsters that have the disturbance early in the morning, I think that they are rightly concerned with. So, they did segregate this property into two sections. What you see at C4 would allow a wider range of commercial uses. And of course, we, we've tried giving the reassurance that it would meet the gateway design overlay district standards in addition to design guidelines, because that's the highest quality development we have in the city of Murfreesboro, it's the most restrictive review that we have, and it has the highest standards. So, as far as what we have to offer as guarantees, a forty-foot buffer is above and beyond anything we require elsewhere in Murfreesboro, and meeting the gateway standards is, are the highest standards we have in our community. So, that was something additional that we hoped could help, help alleviate some concerns. The nature of plan developments are, you come up with a specific plan, but it is not unusual for fifteen years later for there to be changes. We are guided by council, and council very much wants development to pay for itself. And so, yes, the new road that will be constructed will be developed, or paid for by the developers and not the city. We'll, of course, take the road over once it becomes public. The property was, at one time, all under one ownership. We're aware of the changes in the market in the mid, or around two thousand seven, two thousand eight. The person who owned the property lost it, of course, like, like many people did, so there is no longer that one owner who owns everything. There are, I think, three different owners in the, in the area. So, I think the economy of scales, whether you consider that or not, but it's different now than it was fifteen years ago. It's still your call whether you think this is an appropriate change in the, in the use there. This property is very near an interstate, so it's not really a rural setting, because it's so close to an interstate interchange. But of course, the, the development that's in here is, it's denser. I did hear some questions about the notices, and we did meet our legal requirements for notices. What we are required to do is put a notice in the paper at least fifteen days before the public hearing that was published. In addition, we try to go above and beyond that, and we send notices to residents who live within two hundred and fifty feet, and we place signs on the property. I think as planners, we can train or coach our planning staff who put the signs out there to look for better locations. I'm not sure exactly where they put them, but Mr. Blomley and I can look at the location and see if there are better places to put it. And, but we're glad that they were able to see the notice in the paper, and then also get those mailouts as well.
Ms. Green?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question on this? And I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to clarify something, if you said this already, but I've, I've heard on the, on the GDO overlay at some, in some other, in these other meetings that, you know, kind of a road-facing side has to have X amount of brick, or, you know, it has some of those, call them limitations, but those requirements. Would that be, would Shores Road be considered into that, or is it only the front-facing road? How does that work?
We have several different standards. Brick would be expected on all four sides, because it should be a predominantly brick, stone, or rock building, so it may not be brick, it could be rock. And so, the materials themselves, of course, would be, would be high-quality, but also in the gateway, we look at four-sided architecture. I think, of course, the planning commission is tasked with reviewing this. The biggest factor is if it would be a single-story versus multi-story building, and it could be either. A single-story building located on C5 with a forty-foot buffer, I think you would see very little of that building from the adjacent homes located along Shores, the existing Shores Road. If it's multi-story, then of course, we look at that, what, what you can see. What we ask the, when it comes to site plan process, what we ask them to provide us is a sightline study, so a study that actually shows you what you can see from the road, and, and determine if what's seen is appropriate. I think the noxious uses tend to be more on the first level, and with the buffer, including a berm, that will really cut down on seeing any of that stuff. It's, it's something that also we look at with our design guidelines. It's not a front if they don't have access to it, but we do design to four-sided architecture.
Okay. Couple of the questions that I had, as I looked through it, just kind of thinking along this, is, one of them was the liquor store that would be right there, pretty close by, not only, not only to the residents who showed up here tonight, but also just the, the residents that are going to be filling in that whole area back in there, behind there. If the, if the applicants had, you know, if that was okay to think through. Okay.
They've said that they're willing to take that out, I just want to make sure that that's on record.
Thank you. The other thing was, just get a little bit of explanation on the idea of a hospital in C5. It's only six acres.
It's only six acres. I think that that is sort of a far-fetched dream. They wanted to find all institutional-type uses and include them there that they think would serve an older population, and so they're really targeting the fifty-five and up community, so they added a hospital as, I think, thinking that they would serve that use, but I can't see a hospital being located.
Yeah, I mean, with, with parking.
Practically speaking.
Well, but with, with, even if it was going to be the, some difference between a medical building and a hospital, and where is there some gray area of what you call what? There would be a substantial amount of parking, so I mean, the, the, whatever you call it, the building envelope or something would have to be really small, if I'm thinking about that right. Is that right?
We go by the state's definition, whether it is a hospital or not, and the state very restricts the number of beds that are allowed in a community, and I know in all cities in Tennessee that the hospitals are battling for presence, and so I don't even know that, I mean, that the state would have approved them for, for that, to be a true hospital as defined by the state of Tennessee.
Yeah, I mean, I get, it brings into question a little bit about, you know, ambulances coming in and, and all that kind of stuff with lights and sirens, and I guess I'd just be, I'm a little concerned, but I can't, is there a?
I hate to bring this up, but even just being a fifty-five and up community, there's a higher chance of having vehicles to serve the population. I don't think it's something that.
I'd rather you not brought that up.
Yeah.
I'm easing up there now.
You officially offended the majority of the people who are up here on this floor, so.
But you didn't, because you said you hated to bring it up, so it's all good.
Does that, does that get me out of it?
But it would have to be a, I guess the point I'm trying to get at is, it would have to be a really small facility, right? I mean.
It would be.
If I'm thinking about that right. Okay, sorry.
I, I think we've, we've agreed to remove SOAP, we've agreed to remove liquor store, and have we agreed to remove hotel?
Yes.
Okay, hotel is listed in the book as well, so we're going to remove that as well.
Hotel is in C4. Are you removing it from C4?
We're removing it from C4. We're leaving, we're leaving it in C4, we're taking it out of C5, we're moving it to C5.
Okay. In C4, you're leaving it.
They're removing SOAP, just to clarify, that was the manufacturing, storage, and distribution of SOAP, in case you're interested. They just didn't include the entire language. But they're taking that out as well.
So, are there any other commercial properties along Veterans?
There's commercially-zoned properties along Veterans, between this property and the interstate. West Lawn is a mixed-use development, it's a mixed, horizontally-mixed use, so not vertical. And so, when it was originally designed, it was designed for different levels of residential, smaller lots, medium lots, different amounts of commercial property. And it's hard to see on the image that I have now available to go on the screen, but what is between this property and the apartments called Annandale that are currently under construction, is an area for some larger-type commercial development, which at the time anticipated a grocery store, and that still could be something that comes along, but larger, larger-type commercial uses with the typical out parcels along, along, along Veterans. This is the multifamily, it's currently under construction, of course, this is the interchange. So, there is some, and then across the street, more commercial property as part of this development. The existing commercial uses that are actually, have been constructed is the Kroger, that is further south at the intersection of Ninety-Six and Veterans. And that, that house that's left over, he, he didn't oppose the commercial zoning of the Kroger, he was just happy where he lived and said he wanted to stay in that house, and actually asked to have his property zoned to commercial uses, but still wanted to live there for some amount of time. It's just a little bit different.
And then, across the street, you also have Middle Tennessee Electric Membership.
Further south is a, is a PID, Planned Industrial District, and it's an area which Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation has acquired. Across the street, of course, we anticipate some commercial uses to go along with the park.
Is there access from either of these properties back to the future Birch Tree Drive?
Are there access from any of these properties to?
Access to Birch Tree Drive?
Oh, the relocated?
I don't.
I mean, not, not direct access.
So, there's not going to be a road where those properties could go to Birch Tree Drive?
They, they can, they can get there, the connection is here. I don't know if that.
I didn't think it would be very specific by identifying the access points.
Yeah, I saw on the other parts, yeah, I saw those on Shores Drive.
We don't plan on accessing back Birch, we didn't show any access points along the old shore.
Right, yeah, I see the access points, this old shore, the Shore, Shores Road realignment and to Veterans, but I don't see an access identified on the back.
None proposed for that.
Oh, from the commercial development, yeah, right. No, no.
Exactly, so that, we were very specific in kind of addressing where we felt the access points were going to be.
You had a buffer. It's hard to tell, the green line shows restricted access.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in both in here still. Yeah, C4 only. But that is the approved, that's from our book, that's what's approved there. They don't have it in here.
If there are no other questions or comments, I move for approval with the understanding of there will not be any liquor store or a SOAP store there.
Ms. Wright, if I'll call the roll, please.
Last, Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now move to rezonate approximately five-point-eight acres along Manchester Pike and Maple Farm Drive from Commercial Highway CH District to Single Family Attached Type Two RSA Two, RSA Type Two District, two thousand eighteen dash four sixteen. Mr. Blomley.
It's Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our next public hearing tonight is a rezoning located at the corner of Manchester Pike and Maples Farm Drive. It's located on the, at the entrance to the Maples subdivision, which is currently under development. The first few sections have been recorded, and there are houses being constructed as we speak. Back when Ms. Maples Taylor had the property annexed and zoned, she left the corners right at Manchester Pike, zoned Commercial Highway, in the hopes of being able to sell those parcels off at some point in the future for the development of some type of neighborhood services there at the entrance to her subdivision. Well, she came to us a few months ago and said that she really hasn't gotten any bites in the entire time that she has been developing the Maple subdivision, and so she decided to come up with an alternative plan and request rezoning to RSA Type Two, which is Single Family Attached District Suburban Townhouse, for a transition of townhouses to her single-family subdivision as opposed to a, the existing transition of commercial zoning to her subdivision. As you can tell, it does back right up to the homes in the cul-de-sac of Runyon Cove. There's the cul-de-sac of Runyon Cove and of Whitlock Court, and here is the property here. As. There's the cul-de-sac of Runyon Cove and of Whitlock Court. And here is the property here. As I mentioned, both corners at the, at the entrance to the subdivision are zoned Commercial Highway. However, she is only requesting the rezoning on the five acres at the northeast corner of, of that intersection. The Murfreesboro 2035 Plan recommends that that property develop as general commercial. Staff suspects that that recommendation on the 2035 Plan was because of the existing commercial zoning at that location. The, the applicants have indicated that they think the townhouse zoning and the townhouse use is more appropriate as a transition back to the Maple subdivision, and, and they are requesting this rezoning. Directly to the north of the subject property is the Whitworth Buchanan Middle School, which is zoned RS-15. And as I mentioned, to the rear or to the east of the subject property is the Maple subdivision, which is zoned RS-10, 12, and 8. And across the street are some existing residential developments in the unincorporated county. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on June the 6th and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning by a vote of 5 to 0 with one abstention. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the city council has before or after the public hearing. Ms. Maples Taylor is in the audience tonight. If you have any questions for her, as are her representatives, Mr. Rob Mulchan and Mr. Matt Taylor from SEC.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Any questions? All right, we'll need to open the public hearing for this amendment to this request. All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll consider ordinance 18OZ-36 to rezone an area along Manchester Pike and Maples Farms Drive, RSA Type 2, first reading 2018-416.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll now move into Plan of Services and Annexation for 34.8 acres along St. Andrews Drive and Veterans Parkway. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. With these new streamlined headings on the agenda, it leaves me less time to get my, my exhibits pulled up. Our next annexation is a public hearing for the city school property, commonly known as the Southwest Elementary School. The city brings this before you today, and the total is 34.8 acres. And I know the city council is very familiar with its location. It is located along the north side of Veterans Parkway and along the east side of St. Andrews Drive. This property was initially owned by two separate ownership groups, the Smith Brothers Properties and St. Andrews LLC. Since this map was prepared, the city has actually purchased both of those parcels. And I'd like to bring your attention to a revised map. I actually laid this out in front of you. There was a small sliver that the Smith Brothers did not wish to retain. And it is, you can barely tell, there's a little bit more orange right there than there was on the exhibit that I, that I originally included in the agenda packet. Because this is such a small area, even though it was included in the, in the agenda, or it was not included in the, in the legal notice, we did approach our legal department to see if we could amend the study area tonight to include that .18 acres. And our legal department ruled that it was a de minimis addition to the, to the study area and that, so we are including that. So what we would be voting on tonight would be the revised study area, which are on the maps that I've laid out in front of you. It includes that additional .18 acres. The Annexation Plan of Services that's before you does indicate that we will be able to easily provide services to the subject property. Of note is that we are including a segment of Veterans Parkway from St. Andrews Drive to here, and then a segment of St. Andrews Drive to the intersection of Veterans Parkway. Those segments have never been annexed, and it appears to be a good opportunity to, to include those segments of right-of-way within the city limits, especially with Veterans Parkway being a street that is already maintained by the city. So we will incur no additional costs by annexing this right-of-way of Veterans Parkway, and we will incur a, a small cost by annexing the right-of-way of St. Andrews Drive. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding this annexation. We would ask that you approve the Plan of Services, subject to it being revised by staff to include that additional .18 acres and, and also the revised annexation study area when you consider the resolution pertaining to the annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the annexation, and my presentation next will be with regards to the zoning.
Mr. Blomley, I think we're all relieved to know that we can provide services to the school site since we started construction on Tuesday. So that makes us feel a lot better now.
It's true. We aim to please.
We're going to hold a public hearing for the Plan of Services and Annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider Resolution 18RPS-37 to adopt the Plan of Services.
Move to adopt the Plan of Services. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider Resolution 18RA-37 to adopt the annexation.
Move for the adoption of the annexation. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now need to conduct a public hearing to zone 28.5 acres along St. Andrews Drive and Veterans Parkway to Commercial Fringe CF District simultaneous with annexation. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Same property that we're considering, that we considered for annexation, we are considering now for zoning to CF. When we considered what zonings would be appropriate for this property, we considered a few factors. One, what does the comprehensive plan say? It recommends neighborhood commercial for this property. The CF zone is compatible with what the 2035 Plan recommends for this property. Also, with the intended use of it being an elementary school, we looked at what zones would require a special use permit versus what zones would not require a special use permit, especially considering the fact this is on a very tight, tight timeframe. The Commercial Fringe Zone, which is a zone that is sensitive to the, to surrounding residential uses, does not require a special use permit for an elementary school, thus saving a month for the process in addition to Commercial Fringe being consistent with the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on June 6th and unanimously recommended its approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider, which, we'll consider ordinance 18OZ-37 to zone approximately 28.5 acres on Veterans Parkway and St. Andrews Drive.
So moved to Commercial Fringe. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider a Plan of Services and Annexation for 85.9 acres and rezoning approximately 198 acres along Florence Road. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next Annexation Plan of Services and Annexation Petition is located along the west side of Florence Road. It is the back portion of a parcel that was annexed, I believe in 2006, and zoned as a PUD for the home place. The Waldrons owned that property and had a PUD approved, but never developed on that property. Now, with the impending construction of the Cherry Lane Extension, they have requested the annexation and zoning of their entire tract. So the, the balance of the tract that was never annexed is 83.7 acres. And we're adding a couple of other components in there that increase the size of the study area to 85.9 acres. You'll see that there is a segment of Florence Road right-of-way that I just circled that had, that is currently in the unincorporated county, but includes some of the frontage of this property. And because any development on the property would access Florence Road at that location, we would want that to be in the city's jurisdiction. Also, back when we annexed the Windwoods Tract, we left a 10-foot strip along the eastern and northern boundaries of the Windwoods Tract. Since that time, our legal department has opined that the 10-foot strip is no longer required, so we have included that 10-foot strip in the Plan of Services and in the Annexation Study Area. Because that Windwoods subdivision, if we did not include that, the backs of those lots would have 10 feet of their, of their lots in the unincorporated county, and this will just simplify matters when Windwoods develops. The Plan of Services indicates how the city will be able to provide services to the subject property. Right now, one thing of note is that right now, the, the property is within MED's service boundary with MTEMC. However, both the staff and.
Trust, Richard.
Staff of MED and MTEMC agree that it would be more feasible for MTEMC to serve the subject property. And so they have indicated in their responses to staff that they are going to seek to amend the service boundaries so that MTEMC can serve that property. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. The next items on the agenda will be to consider resolutions regarding the Plan of Services and the Annexation Petition itself.
We'll need to conduct a public hearing for the Plan of Services and Annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Just understanding, we only discuss in the annexation right now, not the zoning change, correct?
Just the Plan of Services and Annexation.
Then I'm going to sit back down. I'll come up next time. Thanks.
No, no problem. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage Resolution 18RPS-39 to adopt the Plan of Services.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider Resolution 18RA-39 to adopt the annexation.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now need to consider, excuse me, have a public hearing to zone approximately 134 acre, 198 acres from planned unit development, PUD District, Single Family Residential 10 RS-10 District to Single Family Residential 12 RS-12 District, and Medium Density Residential District RM, Rutherford County, to Single Family Attached Type 2 RSA 2 District, Single Family Residential 6 RS-6 District, Commercial Fringe District, Commercial Highway District, and Planned Residential Development District, Windwoods PRD 2018-417.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We've tried to give you as complicated a zoning request as we could give to you. This has, this zoning request is the most colorful zoning map I think I've ever seen. What I think may be more helpful to you is to show you an exhibit prepared by SEC that shows the proposed road. The Cherry Lane Extension or MTI-11, Mr. Huddleston? MTI-11, as we're calling it, because it may not end up being called Cherry Lane in the future. MTI-11, midterm improvement number 11, is kind of the driving force behind this zoning request. And I think what makes more sense, when you look on the, the exhibit that I have on the map, that shows how they're proposing to divide the zoning boundaries for this property. So if you follow the blue line here, that is the proposed MTI-11 roadway construction. And here, and here would be Commercial Highway zoning. So closest to the future interchange would be Commercial Highway zoning. Further back, you have Commercial Fringe zoning to transition back to proposed residential uses. And RS-6, Single Family zoning.
Tick, tick, to.
RSA 2, RSA 2, and then Commercial Fringe located right on the frontage of Florence Road. So when you think about Florence Road right now, that may seem a little bit unusual. But when you factor in a five-lane road intersecting with a three-lane road, Florence Road, it's a major arterial lining up with a minor arterial, I would say. And so they're proposing commercial uses on that corner. So they're trying to transition back to some residential uses from the interchange and then back to some commercial uses along Florence Road. The total acreage of this tract is 198 acres. And also, we are looking at the zoning of the 10-foot strip to PRD simultaneous with annexation. And that's just to make it consistent with the Windwoods PRD that was approved earlier this year. The future land use map in the 2035 Plan recommends that the property develop as general residential, which is a residential classification with a density of between about 3 and 1/2 units per acre to about 8.6 units per acre. The RS-6 zone is definitely compatible with the general residential uses that are, that are listed in the 2035 Plan. The RSA Type 2, the use itself is permitted. Now, the RSA Type 2 zone does allow a density of up to 12 dwelling units per acre. So the density allowed in the RSA Type 2 zone is a little bit higher. However, I'm not really certain that the, that the 2035 Plan contemplated the, the impact of the, of the proposed Cherry Lane Extension on this property. Because you can even see on the Dismukes property, in between the Waldron property and the interstate, it calls it out as suburban residential, which seems unlikely located right next to a proposed interchange. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this zoning request on June the 6th and unanimously recommended approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Matt Taylor and Mr. Rob Mulchan with SEC are here representing the Waldron family.
All right, any questions? All right, Mr. Blomley, we're going to open the public hearing to consider this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Brad Hornsby of the Rutherford County Bar. I'm here on behalf of Jenny Justice. And if you had that map in front of you, Ms. Justice owns the property directly to the east of that property. And as this council is probably well aware, directly to the south is where the Sazerac distillery is going to be located. So Ms. Justice currently has, let's call it rural area, she has two ponds back there. She's got a sinkhole, a lot of woods, fields out there, and that's the character that she has right now. Our position is, her property, when it's going to be abutting, all of this property is going to turn into an attractive nuisance. You're going to have houses, businesses, and a lot of people there. What she would like is some type of impenetrable barrier between her property and what is going to now be commercial slash residential property. I've seen what the county has done, or the city has done, if you go out to Joby Jackson, where you got that subdivision near Manchester Highway, and the businesses, you have what looks like about a 10-foot beam with trees. And what we're having right now is when you look at this right now, and you have her out there in the country, which is where she is, with ponds, sinkholes, and all this land coming in, she would respectfully submit that we put something similar on her between there. Before coming to this, we tried to call Mr. Taylor to see what type of barrier or buffer was going to be there. And at this time, he was silent and wasn't sure. He wanted to talk to the Waldrons and get back to us. So our position is very simple. We need some type of impenetrable barrier. That's what we're requesting. Eight-foot fence would be sufficient, 10, what you did at Joby Jackson would be sufficient. But when you're putting all this property right beside farmland, and people can go right from one to the other, like they're going to do with the Sazerac distillery there, she would just like a very good barrier that, between her property and that of this new, this new subdivision, I guess is what we're going to call it. So her position would just be, we would request that some buffer barrier at least be described so that you can come out and say, this is appropriate. She's got farmland. Now, we're going to have businesses right across the street. You're going to have a distillery within a stone's throw. You're going to have the Dismukes property to the south of her property. And we just would respectfully submit that she needs to have some type of barrier, keep her separate. So that's our request on behalf of Ms. Justice.
Thank you, Ms. Hornsby.
Thank you, Ms. Hornsby.
Matthew, could you come up here and mark on the map, the property, exactly which property he's talking about?
I think that Mr. Huddleston indicated to me that this is Ms. Justice's property. Is that, is that correct, sir?
That is correct. That is Ms. Justice's property.
Okay.
It's to the west.
It's to the west. Yes, sir, it is to the west, and that's the Dismukes property where it says area. You'd agree with that. And directly south to the right of that is where the Sazerac distillery is going to be.
Yeah, sorry, you said to the east.
I apologize.
All right, I think at least.
Yeah, her property is, this property is to the east of hers, she's to the west. So I apologize for that.
Got it.
But she's north of that area that's marked area.
Thank you. Mr. LaLance and Mr. Smotherman, I think what, in response to, if I may, because I think the public hearing is still underway.
Yeah, public hearing's still going.
Okay, would you like me to respond to this now, or?
We'll wait till afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ballmy, you can now answer the question.
Exercise.
Wait for you to sit down. So, the zoning that is proposed directly adjacent to the Justice property is commercial highway, I like this thing, by the way, and commercial fringe.
The colorblind guy sitting beside me, Dutton. Real funny.
So, so, we do have by ordinance landscape requirements, landscape buffer requirements. Assuming that Ms. Justice's property is zoned RM in the county, which is their, which the majority of property in the unincorporated county is zoned RM, it's residential medium density, then, which is the equivalent to a single-family zone in the city, there would be a type D buffer, which is the second most stringent buffer that our zoning ordinance requires, that when CH or CF abuts, single-family residential zoning, that type D buffer is required, and that is a 15-foot wide, pretty densely planted strip of evergreens. We don't have a fencing requirement, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that mandates a fence. What I would suggest in that instance is for the gentleman and/or his client to discuss with the Waldrons, perhaps putting a covenant on the property that a fence would be required. But by city ordinance, we would require, whenever that property develops, a type D buffer under the, under the proposed zoning.
These are most stringent buffers, is that correct?
Second most stringent, type E is our most stringent, and that's what we would normally see between industrial and single-family residential.
Mr. Hornsby, do you know what the current zoning is on Ms. Justice's property?
Yes, sir, I apologize, I do not. I think it, I just really don't know.
Okay, all right.
And that would be a six-to-eight foot berm with evergreens on top of it.
The, they can supplement the berm with, or they can supplement the buffer with a fence or with evergreens, and of course, that would be something that would be within the Planning Commission's purview at the site plan approval stage to review the screening. I think that typically, we would, the Planning Commission would usually reserve adding buffering requirements if it were actual, actual single-family uses on the other side of the property line as opposed to undeveloped property, but the Planning Commission certainly would have the option to, to place other appropriate conditions on the, on the approval of the site plan.
Is there any kind of timeframe on, on any of this, I guess particularly about that commercial property? I mean, is there?
I believe I would request that Mr. Taylor come up and answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Ballmy. Matt Taylor from SEC here in town. We don't have a definite timeframe on that commercial. Our opinion, of course, would be that it's largely going to be driven by the construction of Cherry Lane and more, much more likely, the construction of the future interchange that we anticipate to the southwest. So, our request is more of a function of trying to get what we feel like is the appropriate zoning in the area. It's very unlikely anything's going to happen until those, those items are in place. Now, the residential, we would see happening much more quickly, but those commercial areas, we see possibly sit in there for many years.
If we know the interchange may be a little bit out, and then as the development of whatever we're going to call the road, is it something that we could ask that the applicant work with Ms. Justice when a site plan does come through, that, to make sure that the appropriate buffering that would be acceptable with her, her property? The thing I would say with a fence, the way that that property works, I'm not sure that, you know, on a, on a five-lane road and having a fence that comes right up to the five-lane road where her property would probably be appropriate, but I think it would be much more in character with what she has, to have a very dense buffer, landscape buffer there, which is what we would, you know, require already to be put out there. So could we do that at, at site plan approval with the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir, and that's, that's what I had talked with the, Mr. Kevin Waldron about prior to the meeting, is, you know, whenever these site plans do come up, that we, you know, look at that. You know, at the time, you know, her property may be of a different use at that time, or be zoned of a different kind, if we're talking 10 or 20 years down the road. So we're more than happy to make that commitment to work with our neighbors like we always do.
Okay. All right, I don't believe we had any other questions from the public hearing. Council members, y'all have any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we now have a plan of services and annexation for 146.6 acres along Bradyville Pike. Mr. Ballmy, did we not, refresh my memory, did we not have a public hearing on this back?
We did, we did, and I've got some history for you on it.
Okay.
We actually had a public hearing on this annexation on May the 3rd under a different study area. We had originally scheduled the annexation and zoning public hearings for this property for May the 3rd. The City Council had, had some concerns about the previous shape of the, of the annexation study area and deferred action on it, and so we've revised the, the extent of the study area. The old study area that went before the City Council on May the 3rd included a substantial amount of right-of-way of Veals Road up until this point right here. Council had concerns about annexing such a large segment of Veals Road and the maintenance concerns that would, that would come with annexing that segment of Veals Road. So, what we did was, after the council deferred action on the annexation, we brought this revised study area to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the revised study area. The way that we connected the subject property to the city limits instead of annexing Veals Road, we are proposing to annex a, an approximately 9,200 linear foot segment of Bradyville Pike, which is a state right-of-way. One advantage of annexing the right-of-way of Bradyville Pike versus the right-of-way of Veals Road is that we get reimbursed by the state to maintain state highways, and Bradyville Pike is a state highway, so we will actually receive funds from the state to maintain this segment of Bradyville Pike. The, the annexation study area, or the annexation plan of services, has changed only in the fact that we have revised the rights-of-way that are proposed to be annexed. The subject property itself is the 134-acre tract on the north side of Bradyville Pike and on the south side of Veals Road. It is proposed to be developed with a step system. Sewer is not presently available to the subject property, but services will be, be able to be provided other than sanitary sewer. I would mention that I do need to confirm with the Fire Marshal's Office, the existing house on the subject property, initially the Fire Marshal's Office indicated to us that an additional fire hydrant be installed before the effective date of annexation. Mr. Taylor has indicated to me that he has had conversations with the Fire Marshal's Office, that they do, that they no longer wish to require that additional fire hydrant, and so if it, if it pleases the council, we would recommend approval of the plan of services, to revise the language, instead of mandating that a fire hydrant be installed, that, that a fire hydrant be installed if required by the, the Fire and Rescue Department. And I will attempt to, to confirm that prior to second and final reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing on this annexation request.
All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for the plan of services and annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider Resolution 18R PS 39 to adopt the plan of services.
Move for approval, subject staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll now consider Resolution 18RA 39 to adopt the annexation.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Ballmy, I know we've already gone over the annexation or the PRD previously.
We actually did not.
Okay, we did not.
We did not hold the public hearing, and we did not have a presentation on it after the annexation was deferred.
Proceed, please.
This is the companion zoning request for the 134-acre parcel that was the impetus for their annexation request. It is requested to be zoned PRD, planned residential district simultaneous with annexation. Also, we have a 10-foot strip here that is proposed to be zoned RS 10 simultaneous with annexation to, to clean up one of those pesky 10-foot strips that have been hanging around for a couple of years. The proposed development is called Carter's Retreat. There we go. And it proposes a density of 1.57 dwelling units per acre. It's a proposed single-family residential development, and the 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends that the property develop as suburban residential, which is a density of 2 to 3.54 dwelling units per acre with recommended city zoning classifications of RS 10, 12, and 15. One thing that I would say is, even though the lot sizes are smaller at a minimum of 6,500 square feet than the RS 10, 12, and 15 zoning district, the 2035 Plan also allows in the suburban residential classification, smaller lots clustered around open space. And because of the terrain of the property, and because of the fact that there will be a step system, there is a generous amount of open space in this proposed development, and Mr. Mulchan with SEC will go over the, the details of the proposed development momentarily. But there is a, there is a robust amenity package and, and a very generous amount of open space. So staff feels that the request is consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan. The property is, the surrounding land uses around the property are all in the unincorporated county and are all, most all, single-family residential in nature. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on March the 7th and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Ballmy, when you talk about the step system being part of the green space, is that all fenced in, you know?
There, it is, it is fenced in, and I don't know if the Water Resources Department ever settled on what type of fences is required.
It's not usable, though, right? It's not usable.
It's not, it's not usable green space. That's in addition to the green space that they will have, that will actually be usable, that will have tot lot, and they have walking trails and other amenities.
I'll listen, I'll just leave. Okay, thanks.
All right, Mr. Mulchan.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Rob Mulchan, SEC, and on behalf of Sourceline LSC, I'm accompanied by Tas Lundie and Loz Bolden to present to you Carter's Retreat. Matthew talked about, we're really actually located between Veals Road in the north, which is the Orange Road, and Bradyville Pike along the south, and the blue lines there, so you can see the site more or less located in the middle. You can see, as Matthew talked about, the property is actually incorporated around all by RM zoning within the county on that side, so you can see the city boundary off to the northwest side of the property, so the annexation portion of this will allow Bradyville Pike to connect the project back to the city in regards to zoning. As Matthew talked about, in regards to the land use plan, the land use plan actually calls for a minimum of two dwelling units per acre. With this plan, with the amount of open space we're providing, even though, like we said, we're going with a 6,500 square foot lot, we're actually under the two units per acre, which is the low end of the spectrum in regards to the character used for this land use. Let's go really quickly through some pictures of the site itself. As you can see, this is an open pasture field. More sites, this is looking in, this is looking from Bradyville Pike north into the site. The existing home that Matthew talked about, that will be demolished at some point in time here in the new fruit tree. Here's some of the existing character, house characters of the areas around there, and these are also all incorporated within the Rutherford County RM zoning. We're looking, the plan calls for about 210 single-family detached lots and 134 acres, like I talked about, it's a 1.57 dwelling units per acre, so that's a very small dwelling units per acre, like as Matthew talked about. There's 85 acres of this project, or almost 64% of this will be green space in some form or fashion, whether the, the step fields or active or passive play areas that you see on the plan itself. All public streets, a very walkable community, sidewalks on both sides of all streets, and all underground utilities. Here's the plan itself, as you can see in the lower left-hand corner, that is one of the larger step fields, and the upper left-hand corner, before you get to the wooded area, is the other step field, and there's also another little pocket of step soils, more or less in the middle of the open space, just to the southeast, the stormwater management facility. But you can see the development is very well clustered with a lot of green space around it. The development itself predicated on the fact that all that green space along Veals Road is there because the property is very non-conducive to any type of development, very rocky, very treed, there's some water issues that are back there, so we've more or less consolidated the development of the homes to the central and southern portions of the property, and allowed us to keep the existing green space along the outside for outdoor recreation, passive and so forth. We've got some trails and such, that we'll talk about here in a little bit. Minimum lot size, as I spoke about, is 6,500 square feet, looking at 35-foot front setbacks, these will be side entrance garages on some of these corner lots, we'll also have 35-foot on, on the fronts, and also any secondary frontages on those lots, we'll have 30-foot front setbacks on those secondary frontages along corners. Two-story homes, a minimum of 1,600 square feet of livable space, these will be mixtures of two and three-bedroom units. The homes will have a covered front porch or stoop to add to the architectural character. These will be front-loaded garages, two cars. Garage doors will have windows and such to make them more architecturally appealing along the streetscape. Building materials, we're looking at cementated fiberboard, cement, brick, stone on the fronts, and cement fiberboard on the sides and rears, vinyl only permitted in the trim and soffit and dormer areas. Here's a couple of images of the proposed homes that'll be going in the neighborhood themselves, very good architectural character, and you can see the brick and stone as the accent elements on these homes. Amenities, as I talked about, almost, you know, 60, 60-some percent of this property will be an amenity area. The main amenity area will be the centralized area at the back where the community can come and focus, that'll have a pavilion and tot lot back there, along with a continuous nature trail, there'll be actually two types of trail systems, we'll have a paved trail system, which you can see located inside the red there, that'll be for walking and such like that. We'll also be incorporating a unpaved nature trail that'll wander along the eastern boundary through the wooded section over there, it's a little more hospitable for a walking environment back there versus the northern portion of the property on that. We'll also be incorporating along the street, along the frontage of Bradyville, we'll be incorporating a 30-foot wide landscape area, and this is a landscape yard, that'll have berms and landscape plantings to make it more of a welcome and appealing frontage along Bradyville Pike and welcome you into the development as you drive by or as you're pulling in the neighborhood. We'll also be incorporating our development signage at the first entrance. Regards to access, we had some These will be front-loaded garages, two cars, garage doors will have windows and such to make them more architecturally appealing along the streetscape. Building materials, we're looking at cementation, fiberboard, cement, brick, stone on the fronts, and cement and fiberboard on the sides and rears, vinyl only permitted in the trim and so forth in dormer areas. Here's a couple of images of the proposed homes that'll be going in the neighborhood themselves, very good architectural character, and you can see the brick and stone as the accent elements on these homes. Amenities, as I talked about, almost, you know, 60, 60-some percent of this property will be an amenity area. The main amenity area will be the centralized area at the back where the community can come and focus, they'll have a pavilion and totlot back there, along with a continuous nature trail, there'll be actually two types of trail systems, we'll have a paved trail system, which you can see located inside the red there, that'll be for walking and such like that. We'll also be incorporating a unpaved nature trail that will wander along the eastern boundary through the wooded section over there, it's a little more hospitable for a walking environment back there versus the northern portion of the property on that. We'll also be incorporating along the street, along the frontage of Bradyville, we'll be incorporating a 30-foot wide landscape area, and this is a landscape yard that'll have berms and landscape plantings to make it more of a welcome and appealing frontage along Bradyville Pike and welcome you into the development as you drive by or as you're pulling in the neighborhood. We'll also be incorporating our development signage at the first entrance. In regards to access, we had some during our neighborhood meetings, some of the neighbors had some concerns about access in regards to the access points moving into the neighborhood, and also to the existing neighborhoods in the county. We're looking at a couple, the main access point there will be part of Phase 1, this will be the second access point in Phase, in the future developmental areas. We're also looking at incorporating a stub to the adjacent property into the northwest. This will allow for development potentially on the neighboring property to allow for access back to Veals Road at some point in time in the future, but because of the inhospitable terrain to the north, we aren't providing any adjacent, any immediate connections to Veals Road, it'll be potentially through adjacent properties via that stub street. We'll be also providing a construction access road, we found an area on the northeast corner over there along the side to get back to Veals Road, that way focuses our construction access road, that way we're not utilizing Bradyville Pike for any construction access as we build out the first few sections of development. Couple of pictures to show you what the environment along Bradyville looks like in regards to the development, that'll be the intersection there, the first phase. A couple of the views of the other intersections, so they exist today. Appreciate your time and consideration to this plan, and I'm here for any questions now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Mulchan? All right, seeing none, we'll need to open the public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider ordinance 18OZ39 in zoning area along Bradyville Pike, PRD RS10 district.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Schreit, go call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll now consider a professional services agreement for restroom pavilion building at Siegel Park, Fields 16 through 22. Ms. Jackson.
Phase 1 construction for Fields 16 through 22 at Richard Siegel Soccer Park has been completed and includes six fields, parking, and access. However, at that site currently, there are only portable toilets. Phase 2 construction will include a restroom building with pavilion, sidewalks, plaza, and site furnishings, as well as significant utilities. The scope of the proposed professional services agreement with Griggs and Maloney will include survey studies, design, and engineering services, contract documents, and bidding phase services for the Phase 2 work. Later construction of that Phase 2 project is funded in part by a $250,000 grant from the local Parks and Recreation Fund, which we've managed through TDEC. City Council has previously approved a resolution that authorized the related grant application and committed the city to 50% matching funds. Additional funding for the project is allocated in the current CIP. The cost of these professional services proposed tonight is $49,850, which is budgeted. Welcome, any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Jackson?
No questions, a move for approval.
You have a motion?
In a second.
In a second, Ms. Schreit, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll now consider Resolution 18R 839 to adopt the annexation. Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll now consider Resolution 18R 839 to adopt the annexation. Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you.
All right. We have a fiber design services agreement, Mr. Lilly.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor McFarland, Vice Mayor Skels Harris, members of City Council. For the last 15 years, Comcast has provided an institutional fiber network, called the INET, for city use at no cost. INET has been used to connect all city buildings and city schools in one network ring. Comcast has informed the city that under the new franchise agreement, it will begin billing the city for use of this INET. As a, as an alternative, the electric department has built out a 50-mile fiber ring throughout Murfreesboro to connect their substations, with room to accommodate city buildings. A construction and splicing plan must be created to detail the extension and configuration of the fiber from net, from the network's ring to each city building. Through an RFP prepared and approved by Metro Nashville, vendors were requested to submit proposals for dark fiber development. Metro Nashville selected FCS for dark fiber development. This election was approved by Metro Nashville in March of 2017. The city is able to utilize this competitive bid and selection process. The IT department recommends that the city, that the council approve the contract for fiber design, construction, and splicing planning services from FCS. If approved, the costs associated with FCS services is anticipated to be approximately $190,663.20, and will be, and will be funded from the fiscal year bond premiums. Open for any questions.
How much is Comcast wanting to charge us per month?
It's around $96,000 a month.
I just wanted to put that on the record.
I'll also put on the record that this INET was built with user funds, or user money that was billed over quite a period of time, so there is a discussion with Comcast as to whether or not this is an appropriate charge whatsoever, so we're not, we're, we're still pursuing that avenue. However, I believe the INET only has about a five-year useful life, is the estimated, so in the long term, we, we do need to, to switch over to another fiber network. Nonetheless, we continue our conversations with Comcast.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Schreit, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you.
We now have a new certificate of compliance for wine in retail stores, Thomas Poploski at MapCo, 2010 Northwest Broad Street. Ms. Schreit, is everything in order?
Yes, sir, it is, this is a new location.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Schreit, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, licensing?
That's for beer. You had something laid out on your desk tonight, and we did a summary sheet for you, the, the summary of the applications are also attached. We have two on-premise locations tonight, one for a restaurant at 711 A through 1, or A through I Suites on North Thompson Lane, also a on-premise location for a restaurant at 219 Northwest Broad Street. That one actually is a name change and new owners. That is in order, except they have not completed their building codes inspections. We also have a special event permit for Main Street for a fundraiser at 746 East Main Street. If you approve these tonight, we will issue these permits once they have completed all of the requirements, including building codes inspections. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Schreit, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we don't have any board and commission appointments, any statements that need to be paid, all right, any other business that needs to come before the City Council?